Good morning to all! And to all Vietnam veterans attending this 50th Commemorative today. I say something that your countrymen should have said to you a long time ago. Thank you for your service and welcome home. Today Mayor Spano and the City Council, as they promised a year ago, will name Yonkers Avenue Vietnam Veterans Way and officially welcome you home. As American citizens, we have the duty to honor all our veterans, past and present. These events done in honor of Vietnam veterans are a way to pay tribute to all veterans. You may have served in combat or in a non-combat role. You may have been a draftee or a volunteer. You may have been in the Army, Navy, Marines, Air Force, or Coast Guard. But you served and you did your job honorably. You may have served in World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Persian Gulf, Iraq, or Afghanistan. But you served. You have a DD-214 with the words "Honorably discharged", two of the most important words in the English language. I am proud to know each and every one of you. And I want to thank you personally for your service and welcome home. Thank you. Please present colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, in our prayers we ask that, as always, you protect and care for all our military personnel across the globe in their day-to-day duties that protect this great nation of ours and all those we continue to protect throughout the world. Lord, in our prayers, as always, we ask that you comfort and care for all of our veterans and their families. You above all know the physical and personal sufferings that come with serving and surviving war. Lord, on this day, our prayers are especially focused on our Vietnam veterans. For so long, somehow, in many ways, these veterans were forgotten and ignored as no other veterans were in the past, not always to be honored as deserved. Lord, on this day, we ask your blessing and kind care for those who served this country during those war years. Please bless and continue to care for them and their families who suffered along with their loved ones who served. Lord, on this day of remembrance for our Vietnam vets, we also pray that you continue to care and comfort those families whose loved ones gave it all, especially the 31 Yonkers residents who passed before us and passed for us during the Vietnam War. Lastly, Lord, we seek a special blessing from Mayor Mike Spano, city officials who supported this project, and the great city of Yonkers for making this Vietnam Veterans Day and ceremony possible. Amen.
One of the guys that really helped out with this whole project was our City Council President. I'd like him to step up and say a couple of words, Liam McLaughlin.
Thank you Lou. And maybe a little chilly outside here today, but I certainly feel very warm inside. Always proud and honored to be here with our veterans and to say thank you. I'm also very proud of the city of Yonkers, who takes the time and the effort to make sure that our veterans know that we're thinking about them and that we honor them and that we thank them for their service. So today I will say thank you to all of our Vietnam veterans for your service, but not only for your service in Vietnam, but also for making sure that future generations of men and women who wear the uniform were never treated the way you were. So, thank you very much.
I would also like to ask Dennis Shepherd, District Leader for this area.
Thank you Lou. It is my area and it's always an honor to have any event that veterans hold. It has a kind of special place for me today. Me and my brother was a Purple Heart recipient of Vietnam. If you just let me bear with you, I just want to tell you a quick story. I know it's cold. I went out to California to see my Uncle Sam, 95 years old. And I went in his bedroom and he's as bright as he can be. And I said, "Uncle Sam, you in Normandy?" And I saw on the wall he served on Omaha Beach and he was wounded twice. He has two Purple Hearts there. And I said, "Uncle Sam, you're a hero." He said, "I'm not a hero. I came back home." That's how veterans always are and any veteran you ever talk to, they're the most humblest people you ever met. And it's an honor and a privilege that I can stand here before you today and do anything I can for veterans. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you Lou. And I guess I can't say anything more than what everyone has said. Thank you, thank you, thank you to all of our veterans. I often talk about my dad, who is a World War II veteran with Purple Hearts and what he went through. I don't always talk about my brother, who is a Vietnam veteran, a former Marine. Oh, I'm sorry. You're never a former Marine. A Marine. And I think one of the reasons that I do not talk about him that much in the context of service is because he didn't talk about it much. Because of all the things we've spoken about, how it was a war that was so unpopular and it spilled over wrongfully to those who were defending our country and doing what we sent them to do. And the pain that was associated, I think, was just part of why he continued to stay quiet. My brother visits us every Thanksgiving, every Christmas, and I will be very happy to bring my brother right here so that he can know that this city recognizes the service of not only him but all of the brave men and women. So I want to thank the mayor, the city council, everyone. And I speak, I'm sure, on behalf of my colleagues in the state legislature. We would like to see this done throughout the state, throughout the nation, so that you understand the gratitude that we have and that we understand that that will never, ever happen again. Thank you.
I am so honored to represent the Yonkers in Washington, in the United States Congress. Never more proud than I am now. And to all of our veterans, both Vietnam and others, just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. You know, the Congress of the United States, every several days, we pause for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans and there's a prayer that's being said. It's done routinely. Because what happened to the Vietnam veterans was an absolute disgrace, never to happen again. We take for granted the freedoms we have, but it's the brave men and women who fought who gave us those freedoms. And the Congress of the United States, I have always and will continue to support, more aid for our veterans. We have a problem with balancing budgets in Washington. We should never balance budgets on the backs of our veterans. We have to increase funding for our veterans, VA funding and other funding. And in there I can tell you, there is no partisan dispute. We hear all the time how Washington is dysfunctional and the parties can't get together. Everybody agrees that we need to continue to help our veterans and that's why more money's been appropriated for VAs and other things than ever before. That is bipartisan and it should always remain so. So I just want to say, in conclusion, to thanking all of you. To thank all of you. All of you who are here and those who never came back. We have, in Washington, as you know, a Vietnam monument, a monument to the Vietnam War. Very often I go there just to stay and look and see the names of those who made the ultimate supreme sacrifice. It's something that we should never forget and something that we should teach our children. Thank you and God bless the Vietnam veterans.
When I was in junior high school, in the early years of high school, every night we'd watch Walter Cronkite on television. And for those of a certain age, we all did that. And we'd watch the map of Vietnam come up. And we would hear about places we couldn't imagine. Khe Sanh, Hua, Da Nang, places that meant nothing to us except what it meant on the map. And for the first time in American history, we saw on television a war with men dying. We saw helicopters and napalm. Back here in this country, there was the Summer of Love in San Francisco. There was Sandy Koufax and Ron Marishall and Bob Gibson. There was life living every day, unlike it was in World War II, unlike it was in World War I where the whole society sacrificed. But there were men that sacrificed. Men that went over to that strange land and the strange names of communities we couldn't pronounce. And some of them died. And even the ones that lived were hit with Agent Orange. They came home and the nation didn't just forget them. They treated them like dirt. And we owe those men a debt that we have to repay. What Yonkers is doing today, to their great credit, the mayor and the city council, they are part-repaying that debt to say, "What you did over there that we forgot and we treated badly, we're not going to forget it." And there's not much time left. Even a junior high school kid in the mid-sixties is now in his sixties, meaning most of our Viet vets are late sixties and seventies. There's just about enough time to let you know how much we love you, how much we were wrong as a nation to treat you the way we did and to try to make those years that you have as honored as we honor our World War II vets. God bless you.
And now I'd like to introduce the man who has made this happen, our mayor, Mayor Spano.
Thank you and good morning, everyone. Let me say thank you to really who made it all happen. That's the Veterans Officers. I want to say thanks to Lou and your entire team. On behalf of myself, on behalf of Council President Lee McLaughlin, the Majority Leader John Larkin, the Minority Leader Mike Sabatino, the members of the City Council, it's certainly a pleasure for me to be here today as we recognize those who should be recognized each and every day for the great contributions that you have all made to make this the greatest country and entry into the world. You know, I love being in America. I love it more than anything and I think all of us do. But I also think that many of us take for granted many of the things that, and the freedoms that we all have. You know, if you just look at the crowd behind me, just think about it. Because when I described the crowd behind me, elected officials at different levels of government, Republicans, Democrats, black, white, Jewish, Christian, straight, gay. There are a mixture of people who all represent us, who all represent this great country. And you know why? They're in those positions because you gave your lives to make this and to give them their opportunity to be able to speak on behalf of those who couldn't speak for themselves. You gave it. You made it work. You made it work. Black, white, Latino, gay, straight, male, female, different parties. You could decide in this country to be whatever you want to be. You could pick any career you want to pick. You could disagree with your government and not worry about being shot down in the street of your own community. That's all happened because of each and every one of you. And that's the shame of it all when you think about the way this unpopular war spilled over into our veterans. When you read about it in history books, it makes you sad, but you know why? But when you look around us and you think of what you accomplished, it makes me glad to know that we had each and every one of you fighting for us. Because you know why? You deserve all the credit and all the accolades that were given to you here today. We're going to continue to do that. We will never forget the veterans. We will never forget those of you who've lost your lives. We will never forget the Gold Star Mother who grieves the loss of her son or daughter but knows full well that she gave so that we could live in this great country under the freedoms that we all live by. So to the veterans, I say thank you. To our Vietnam veterans, long overdue, welcome home. God bless you all and it's great to be in America.
I'm sure you're going to be free because of the weather, but my dear friend Judge Gaffney has a few words to say.
Good morning, folks. Believe it or not, we actually had a weather committee. So if you have any problems with the weather today, John Spencer, Ed Dingee, and Frank Sulo, I think they got it mixed up. I think they thought we were honoring Korean veterans. I'm dedicating what I'm about to say to all my fellow Vietnam veterans, particularly two of my friends, very good friends, who died last year from Agent Orange. Bob Morrow and Buzz McMillan. Buzz had been wounded in a grenade attack, underwent 14 separate surgeries, but in the end succumbed to Agent Orange. Last March 29th, we gathered for what was designated as Vietnam Veterans Recognition Day. That day was chosen because it marked the 41st anniversary of the end of the war of Vietnam. At that time, Mayor Mike Spano pledged that the year to follow that ceremony would be dedicated to the Vietnam veterans. Today, we are here as part of that promise and also as part of the national commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the start of the Vietnam War. True to the mayor's word, we are here for a certain portion of Yonkers Avenue to be dedicated as Vietnam Veterans Way. And within that designated area, individual street signs will be placed, each bearing the name of a Yonkers resident who was killed in that conflict. This is a day which was a long time coming and the honor is both well-deserved and well-appreciated. As most of us would like to celebrate the end of a war instead of its beginning, I will also note that this is the 42nd anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War. Did I say the end of that war? Unfortunately, there is no such thing. Just look around you, folks, and you will see vivid proof in the veterans here today that for many, if not all, the war never ended. It still rages on within those who fought it and within their loved ones and their friends. Ask any person whose family member, father, son, daughter, sister, brother, cousin, uncle or aunt, fought or died in that war if it is over. They will tell you that it is also an everyday event for them because they must constantly deal with that veteran. As for those whose loved ones were killed in that war, they will tell you that the sting and the heartache of that person's death never goes away. There is a saying, "You can take the veteran out of Vietnam, but you cannot take the Vietnam out of the veteran." How true that is. The question, "How long has it been since you were in Vietnam?" can be answered very simply with the refrain, "I was there last night." The Vietnam veterans gathered here today have been living with their memories of that experience for the vast majority of their lives. The horrors of that war came to us at a very young age, before we were even old enough for the military. I was just 15 years old when I started to see the gatherings at funeral homes for what I later learned were young soldiers, sailors, airmen, coast guardsmen or Marines who had been killed in some faraway place. At first, I didn't realize what was happening. I would pass by a local funeral home and see the crowds, but I wasn't aware of who had died. That is, until I started to notice some of the older teenagers and those in their early twenties in attendance and asked them what was going on. I know that the Vietnam War was the subject of nightly news reports, but I was a kid, a teenager. The last thing in the world that I was going to do was go home and watch the national news. In my case, ignorance was bliss because I certainly didn't realize in a very short time, at the age of 17, I would be in the Marine Corps training to fight in Vietnam. Little by little, though, I became aware of how and where those young people had died. And I certainly came to know that their families were devastated. I did not realize it at that point, but the ugly reality of Vietnam had entered into my life and in the life of every other American. Indeed, that was the case throughout this great land. Suddenly, our country was losing fine, likable, athletic young men and women and the number of deaths were increasing at an alarming rate. The city of Yonkers was no different and it sent many of its best sons and daughters to assist in that faraway fight. Ultimately, 31 young men from this city were killed in action over there, forever removed from this earth. They are the 31 young men who will be audited with individual street signs. As for many others who returned from that war, while they had not been killed, they had been forever altered. Some to the point where they could not go on with their lives and through a combination of drugs, alcohol, or other means, they retreated within themselves until they too were dead. There is no closure for those who have survived the war. It is an ongoing, everyday event. While the impact differs from person to person, it is a simple truth that each of us is a product of our life's experience and there is no escaping from our memories. War is hell. It is not glory. It is pure, unadulterated horror, unimaginable to those who have not experienced it. And it is a horror that is engaged in mostly by the very young. Many of us were very, in Vietnam, were teenagers. We were just kids. If you survived Vietnam, you then had a very long time to live with that experience. Contrary to one thing that was set up here, we plan on being around a lot longer to live with those experiences. I was truly honored when I was asked to speak here today, but preparing for this opened up many memories which are tucked away in my mind. More importantly, though, it has touched the core of every Vietnam veteran who is here today. We live in a world of instant access to communication and research. Social media rules the day. Since I learned of today's event, I have noticed a steady increase in the posting by Vietnam veterans. Photos, stories, remembrances of comrades. I know that my fellow veterans are proud that today has come, but I also know that they have been dreading today because the floodgates of their memories have been opened and it is ever so painful for them. I know how hard it is for them to be here and I know that there are some that just couldn't be here because they just cannot bear this. I appreciate you standing there in the crowd and I salute you for having the courage to be here today. There is a wall in Washington that carries the names of those men and women who were killed in Vietnam. 58,282 names are inscribed on that monument. Those young men and women are forever frozen in time at the age they were when they were killed. When their families and loved ones think about them, their thoughts of them are as they were when they were last together. Perhaps they were 18, 19, 20, 21 years of age, happy and full of life. The truth is, though, that when the men and women who survived Vietnam think of someone who was with them or think back to an event that happened over there, they too are viewing the scene as they were at that time. Perhaps they were 18, 19, 20, 21 years of age, also happy and full of life. When their mind's eye replays that scene, be it happy, sad, or horrific, the veteran sees him or herself at the age that it occurred. They too are frozen in time. It is no different for the 31 Yonkers residents who were killed in Vietnam. Their loved ones and friends still grieve their loss and they still see that deceased person at the age when they were last together. They are painfully frozen in time. Recently, one of my coworkers glanced at the list of names of those killed and suddenly exclaimed, "I went to grammar school with Joey Armento. He was such a nice boy." It was clear to me that in her mind's eye, she was seeing both Joey and herself as children in grammar school. So, who are our fallen comrades? They are courageous young men and women who gave their lives for our freedom. Each has their own story. As an example, Major Robert Fitzgerald was a Marine Corps helicopter pilot who selflessly gave his life in an effort to save a Marine Corps recon team. Major Fitzgerald was on an assignment when he heard a recon team's call for help. Although he did not have to go to that scene, Major Fitzgerald immediately took his chopper to their location and he was killed while trying to save them. Major Fitzgerald's memory is kept alive by his family and his childhood friend Vincent Pistone, who is here with us today. They too are frozen in time. The men and women of this nation who served in Vietnam did so with as much honor and sacrifice as any who came before them. A Vietnam veteran can proudly stand with those who fought in the revolution, World War I, World War II, and Korea. The Vietnam War was a tough one. It was fought in jungles, mountains, deltas, rice paddies, on rivers, and we had men on ships in the ocean. It was as hot as hell over there and the monsoons made the mud so thick that it would suck you right in. Sometimes, your climb up a mountain was so slick that you literally had to crawl your way up. The enemy was determined, tenacious, treacherous, and very skilled at the art of war. The people of Vietnam had been at war for ages, having fought the Japanese and the French. The North Vietnamese Army was well armed by the Russians and Chinese and a well-disciplined outfit. The Vietcong was stealthy, resourceful, and could blend into the background of the country. Yet, you men held your ground and you fought valiantly. Be you a volunteer or a draftee, you served your country well. You did what was asked of you. Yes, you fought valiantly against the enemy, but while you were doing so, your own country turned on you. Those serving in Vietnam were demonized as baby killers, drug users, and indiscriminate killers of civilians. Hollywood cranked out films perpetuating that myth. If your name was discovered by the enemy who was given to groups in his country, fellow Americans who would harass your family. Even the government, the people who sent you to Vietnam, turned on you. They poisoned you with Agent Orange and they stopped bombing North Vietnam. They actually sent us into combat against an enemy that could reinforce itself without any fear of reprisal. When you returned to this country, you were welcomed back only by your families. With very rare exceptions, your friends completely ignored the fact that you had disappeared for over a year. Even if you had been wounded, no mention was ever made of it. The only people that you had to talk to were fellow veterans and you only did so when you were out of earshot of others. As a returned veteran, your government was once again not there for you. If you went to the VA for job assistance, you were told to read the local newspaper. You did not have post-traumatic stress disorder or traumatic brain injury. Those maladies had yet to been recognized. You were just a weak, a drunk, a drug addict, a shirker, or all of the above. You were just a weak, a drunk, a drug addict, a shirker, or all of the above. Your skin problems, rashes, losing your skin, and developing certain cancers were not caused by Agent Orange. Your hearing loss was not a result of combat, but just a sign that you were aging. You were treated with complete, utter disdain. But what hurt, what really hurt, was that other veterans turned their backs on you. There are Vietnam veterans standing in this audience today who were denied admission into local VFW clubs. For some reason unbeknownst to us, our fellow veterans from other conflicts had adopted the belief that the Vietnam veteran was not worthy of the brotherhood. So what you had when you returned home was that you had fought a war that this country refused to win. You were vilified and despised by many of your fellow countrymen, while others were just apathetic towards you. You were not supported by your government's Veterans Administration, and you were rejected by fellow veterans. When you combine those factors with the horrors which you experienced in combat, you had every right to withdraw from society and turn your back on those who rejected you. And you did that for a while. Most of us went quietly about building a lie for themselves. It wasn't easy, and we had many setbacks. Unfortunately, though, some of our fellow Vietnam veterans could not handle the totality of their experience and drifted off to substance abuse and criminal conduct. Many of them are now dead, while still others are imprisoned, mentally, emotionally, and physically. But while you stepped away, you came back. And when you did, you came back with a vengeance. Since the other veterans' organizations had turned their collective backs on you, you formed your own group, Vietnam Veterans of America. The guiding principle of that organization is, never again will one generation of veterans abandon another. Today, it is the Vietnam veteran who goes to airports to greet troops returning from our battles overseas. It is the Vietnam veteran who, by keeping religious zealots at bay, guards the sanctity of funerals for servicemen and women who have been killed in action. It is the Vietnam veteran who forms a great part of events such as rolling thunder. While we're on this topic, I would ask all veterans to vow to seek justice for those who served in Vietnam prior to 1965, 250 of them who were killed but whose service is not yet recognized by the United States of America. Right here in Yonkers, the Vietnam veteran has been an important part of our lives. Many Vietnam veterans have served on the police and fire departments and other city agencies, protecting and serving the citizens of Yonkers. John Spencer served as a city councilman and as our mayor. Tom Dickerson served us as a city councilman, a city judge, and he continues to serve as one of the finest appellate judges in this state. Ed Fitzgerald served us as a city judge and is an important member of the police department. Lou Navarro and Dan Marea serve us in Veterans Services Agency. John Holland proudly maintains that office. Frank Sulo entertains us at our annual Veterans Day picnic and arranges for top-notch entertainers to come and put on shows for us. Wilfredo Augusto puts on martial arts demonstrations for our veterans. Joe Purcelli served as a fireman in Mount Vernon and now serves as the commander of the VFW Empire Post. Bruce Rinallo serves as the commander of the American Legion Bajart Post. Ira Goldman, well, what can you say about Ira other than he is involved in all things veteran? And how about that rendition of the National Anthem by Jeff Felincheck at yesterday's flag raising? He was great. Many others here today, such as Perry Marchegani, Carlos Vargas, Ed Dinje, and Joe Blank, also form the fabric of many neighborhoods in this city, working and raising families, coaching youth sports. While I am on the topic, what can you say but thanks to Yonkers? A city where the mayor, Mike Spano, the city council, and our state representatives in the Senate and Assembly have always supported us, along with the federal officials, such as Congressman Eliot Engel. Yonkers is a city which has its own Veterans Agency and numerous parades, ceremonies, and picnics. It is a very veteran-friendly place to live. An important part of all veterans' events in Yonkers is the presence of our color guards, both Empire Post and the Police Department. I understand that today is Captain Joe Barker's last veteran ceremony before his retirement. Thank you, Captain Barker, for your dedication to all veterans and to the people of Yonkers. Speaking of retirements, I believe I speak for all veterans when I wish Vito Pinto, another Vietnam veteran, a happy and healthy retirement from his position as director of the Westchester County Veterans Services Agency. The Vietnam veteran is a true epitome of veterans helping veterans and veterans helping their communities. Everything that you do honors the memory of your service and that of the 58,282 people listed on the Vietnam War. Those people are forever your brothers and sisters. You who have been in combat know that you may have been in the military for your belief in the principles of your country, but that is not why you fight and possibly die. Servicemen and women fight and die for each other. When you look in the eyes of another during battle, you know that that person has your back and that you have theirs. It is that simple and beautiful, yet that complex, that you would give your life for another, and they would give theirs for you. For those of you who had a loved one killed in Vietnam, please rest assured that he or she was with good young men who loved them and who did everything they could to help and comfort them. We know that your grief will never end, but you should know that neither will ours. We grieve for them with you. You are our family forever. As a Vietnam veteran, you had every right to turn your back and walk away and stay away, but you did not. You honor your service and commitment to your country by continuing to serve veterans of all eras. You know the value of the brotherhood of arms. It is because of that that you are one of the greatest, if not the greatest generation of veterans that this world has ever seen. So I will not welcome you home today because you were welcomed home decades ago by your families. And you are welcomed home daily by your spouses and children who struggle to understand you and me, despite our issues, love us. Yes, we have issues, but I will leave it at that. I won't give your secrets away. I'd like to thank my family. My wife is here. My son is an infantry commander in the Marine Corps. He's not here today. And my other son is preparing to go in the Marine Corps. So he's not here today. I know that we kid around about the different services. People kid about me being a Marine. But we're all connected, and I am connected to every service. Yes, I was a Marine. My son is a Marine. My father was in the Army Air Corps, but then he was in the Air Force. I served on a Navy ship. My brother was in the Coast Guard. We are all one. We serve this country. I am proud to be one of you, and I love you. Be proud of yourselves. Be proud and always remember your 31 fallen comrades. Be proud of Vietnam Veterans Way and what it truly stands for. You truly deserve this honor and much, much more. May God bless our servicemen and women throughout the world, and may God bless America, and may He grant us peace. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to ask Joe Purcelli, commander of the Empire Post, and Bruce Rinallo, step up front. We want to assist the mayor with the unveil.